All right, we will call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First item that we have is all of our members are present. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler.
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries five zero. All right, we'll go to the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from the April fifteenth regular city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have our rescheduled committee of the whole meeting. That was April twenty ninth. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Some of them.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden by just a hair. Closer than the NASCAR race.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries. Go to the payments and claims. We have International Falls transfers going to the one oh one general fund in three hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty seven cents. That's coming from the lodging tax fund. Go to accounts payable and claims. City of International Falls claims four hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and eight cents. Airport commission claims one hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and seven cents. Airport project claims eighty-one thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. And International Falls library board claims of two hundred dollars. Chair, for a total accounts payable and claims of six hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifteen cents. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries five zero. Anybody in the audience have anything to bring forward? Hearing none. So glad to see that you're here today, Lois. We'll go to the consent agenda. We have nothing under the consent agenda this evening. We'll go to new business. We have an agreement for the use of city beach for kayak and paddleboard landing area with for Rainy Lake Aquatics. We have done this in the past. I don't see Mr. Nordland here. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the land use agreement.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Wegner.
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries five zero. All right, next we have consider letter of support for the KCTV's grant application. Lois, would it be a problem if I asked you to come forward?
Hello?
Hi.
Last week, I submitted a letter for request of a letter of support for a grant application that I was just starting with with the Blanden Foundation for funding to replace our server and equipment for KCTV. That's the history.
Okay, and right now the channel is is down because you had an equipment breakdown, correct?
Yes, we had an equipment failure. Our equipment is about thirty years old and it just it gave up. We've been nursing it along for a long time and have always been able to make repairs, but this one was a little more serious in nature. We do, I'm happy to report that he was able to make a repair. He called it, he Frankensteined it. So we're going to be back up and on the on the air, just but I don't know how long that will last. So I'm looking to replace the equipment, the server and all of the equipment for KCC so that we can get it back on the cable channel for our local people.
Is, will that fix both the audio and the visual issues?
Yes, I met with a representative this morning from a company that's going to that they have the all of the equipment. They have the complete package they can send up to us. And I asked him specifically about the audio and he said that they have made updates to their software and to their equipment so that the audio broadcast will be much more uniform and easier for people to hear. We'll have regulating control ability right at at back us in the KCC studio.
Excellent. And how much is the the total number that you have right now?
Right now, I was very pleased. I expected-
Well, it's way better than what we talked about last week.
Way better than what we thought. To replace the system essentially like the very equipment that we have right now with the audio enhancements, the equipment will cost eleven thousand five hundred dollars, which is far better. We were initially anticipating between twenty and thirty thousand. On top of that eleven thousand five hundred, there would be a licensing fee so that, oh gosh, I can't remember what the license was all about. Oh, so that we could do some live broadcast, but it essentially will do everything that we that we do today. The technology is far better than when it was initially installed, so there are more capabilities, but we're not ready for them yet. So we're looking to replace that with the eleven thousand five hundred dollar equipment.
In the event that you, in the event that you fill out the grant, how long would it be until you find out if you were able to receive that grant?
The grant usually takes at least six weeks before we would find out. At least six. It's due on May ten, so I need it's a quick turnaround on the grant app.
And would that grant cover a hundred percent of the?
I don't know that.
Okay. All right, well, there's been a conversation between you and I on how much it is. There's some idea that, you know, it is the city's peg channel and that equipment is old, so I I think we definitely can support the letter, but I will hand it off to the council to make a motion.
I would make a motion to support the letter and also support making up the difference of what the grant won't cover from I possibly from our EDA funds.
Okay, so we have a motion for a letter of support and to fill the gap from Councilor Kaler.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion?
So it's all new equipment?
All brand new equipment. And the other piece that sit will sit on top of that is that there they will send a support person from the cities, Twin Cities. And he will come up and help us get it running and provide any training on any new pieces that might be just different from what we have. But they'll come up, install it, make sure we're operational and provide any training.
But you think it will take at least six weeks before this grant would go through?
It's, I don't know. I don't have history with the Blanden Foundation, so I don't know. Most most grant up grant applications, it's at least six weeks, can be up to three months.
And so then we don't know that that you think the channel is going to stay on at this point or?
That's a quality assurance right there. It is working.
It is working and we have a very capable tech. He's, he thought this was a done deal. He said, I don't think I can get this up and running, but we will be able, we'll punt with Frank for a while.
Hopefully for six weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is it possible to order the equipment before you get the grant?
Generally, the conditions of the grant are not to pay a bill that you've already incurred. So it isn't, it is, it's frowned upon that you spend money and then ask for a grant after.
Okay.
Well, on the upside, you know that you're whole.
Pardon me?
If this motion passes, you know you're going to be whole regardless, so.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions?
Yeah, how long does it take to get the new equipment? You know?
About two weeks.
About two weeks.
From the point that we order, it'll be up in International Falls within two weeks.
I'm willing to amend. I see where Mr. Wegner is headed here. I'm willing to amend the motion that because no grant is guaranteed, right?
Correct.
We might wait all this time and not get, I'd make the motion that we cover the whole cost of the new system out of our EDA funds. And if need be, we can call a special meeting.
So we have an amendment to the motion to pay a hundred percent of the costs.
Yeah.
Do we have a second to the?
I'll second.
We have a second to the to the motion. So the the motion that we have ahead of us or in front of us right now is to pay the complete cost rather than a letter of support and pay the difference. Please.
Is that motion to to request the EDA?
Correct.
And then have an EDA meeting to make that final?
Correct.
Because this board can't make that decision for-
Hundred percent. That is, that is the motion for us, correct.
I know there is some form of way of it, I just said yes.
Yeah, you totally hit it. All right, so we have a
Why you're here.
We have an amendment to the motion to pay a hundred percent of the costs and put it to the EDA to finalize that agreement. I'll call the question on the amendment.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes. So now the motion that we have before us is to pay or to move this to the EDA to pay a hundred percent of the cost and call a special meeting. Any any more discussion on that? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, the you don't miss what you don't have until it's not there.
Well, and I've had a lot of questions from people, what happened to the TV? And I remember when this all came about, my first time on the council. And you never really knew how much people watch the
And they really do.
To keep up on the local government stuff and the other activities that are on there.
I think we noticed the most significant change when our newspaper went to just weekly. But we do, we have a lot of people who watch and keep up on current affairs by dialing into KCC. So we're committed, Darcy is at, Darcy's everywhere.
Yes, she is.
She is everywhere. And we're looking for a new student advisor to come in as well. Mitch Erickson has been covering a lot of school board meetings and different things too. So we're teaching others as they come up in the ranks to do this community service as well. So thank you for your support. I really appreciate that.
That's a very
Thank you.
Needed community service. So and do we want to call a meeting now?
Sure. How much advance notice do we have to give?
I guess my thought is it-
I mean not, I mean not have the meeting now, I mean
Yeah.
Call the date.
We could just do it next Monday before our committee of the whole.
Either before or just immediately after.
Yeah.
Immediately.
I mean, yep. Media, yep, me, that sounds good.
Immediately after?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will post that for Monday, the thirteenth, immediately following the committee of the whole that's scheduled to begin at four PM.
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect.
In the meantime, you can order the equipment.
I, yeah.
Yeah.
Lois? Is it possible to order the equipment?
Yeah.
We'll place the order and we'll get the work ordered for the gentleman who came up to do the check.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
Get it going right away.
Excellent. We'll move on by moving back. Aaron, I just want to let you know we've already approved your everything, so you're all set.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem. No, we're we're way good.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, no, it's a fantastic service.
And I was all that looking at the basketball court last week and around the beach, me and the dog. And I'm glad he's out there using it and the other because that what a piece of property that I don't know. We we tried before to encourage people to go out there and use it if you have no other choice, but it's
Perfect, yeah.
Really something we have.
Really good. All right. We will move on to the facility use agreement. This is between the City of International Falls and ISD three sixty-one for a period of one year effective July one, twenty twenty-four. And this is for the maintenance agreement of the key ball fields. Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a commercial loan program funding in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents as requested by True Star Federal Credit Union on behalf of the Lack Delune LLC to improve the building located at seven nineteen Seventh Street. Betty, can you just give us a little background on this one?
Sure, I was approached and received the letter and a phone call from Alicia Taylor at True Star Federal Credit Union. They are working with Lack Delune LLC on their commercial property at the seven nineteen Seventh Street. And they also with the regulations of our commercial loan program will be having a loan equal or greater to the value of the twenty-four nine ninety-nine through True Star. And True Star will be servicing the entire loan and doing all the paperwork as they do with the other commercial loans that they have for us. And they're rehabilitating a rental property. And, you know, so then, you know, I'm immediately asking, wait a minute, commercial, I'm thinking downtown business commercial.
Yes.
Well, this is still a commercial property. He is a business. They are, it's it's commercial, it's a commercial loan through True Star. So therefore, we can use this program to offset and coordinate with the commercial loan. Because I did verify that with Alicia. I'm like, okay, what, how is this loan set up with, you know, True Star Federal Credit Union? And it is a commercial loan.
So is this something we should be screaming from the rooftops to have other folks take advantage of for our debilitating rental? And I'm not saying, that is not a dig on our rentals, but we do have places that definitely could be rehabbed, looked at. So is this an opportunity that for the council to be putting this information out on on the radio? Because this is the first time I think I've ever seen any of these.
It is the first time outside of like a downtown business location or other area with, you know, yes, because I questioned it as well.
Yeah.
And it is a commercial property. It's a commercial business. And so they have classified it that way as well. So, yeah, we can. I mean, we have limited funds, but we have plenty of funds right now. And this was all started through Kutaska when they had come in and done the rehabilitation on different areas in our community a number of years ago. So this is, you know, funding that we got back in from that that we can then repurpose and it comes back and we can continue that process with these funds.
Perfect. This is, this is very exciting.
Just curious, is this old Nazarene church by any chance? Anybody know? That might be the only one old enough to-
I would not, I if I look at, I would assume it is.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's guessing, but that'd be the only place, which is good, yeah, I mean.
No, it's very exciting. All right, chair would entertain a motion to approve the commercial loan. We have a motion by Walt.
And I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion?
Yes.
Please.
One, I I don't think this is something that we should be shouting from the rooftops.
Okay.
It's there.
Yeah.
We have it. I think we should be very reserved in how often we do it for rental as compared to a business that may need help with whatever they're doing. Because that will employ people and bring more. I mean, this, yeah, this is, this will help with our housing crisis.
Yeah, and that's how I'm looking at it.
My other question would be, is this, do they have any other rental properties?
Yes, this organization does.
All up to date with Jared and all the, you know, inspections and all that stuff?
Yes, they are. They're actually renovating one of their other locations in the downtown area. And they are current with inspections, correct? They are working with our billing official and the fire marshal.
Now, all the fees and all the?
To my knowledge, I mean, I can verify that, but I don't believe they are one of the ones on our delinquent list.
Okay.
They're not, correct? Okay.
They're all, they're current.
So.
I love that. No, that's fantastic. I different perspective. Like it. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We will not shout it at the rooftops.
Yeah.
We'll just tell people about it.
Yeah, we'll just tell people. That's okay.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, we'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a discuss the construction manager at risk, the C Mar. A new process available for local governments for construction projects per statute four seven one dot four six three.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Sean was coming up.
Yeah. No, I think we said no.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yeah, I think you made that decision, Councilor Wegner. Yes, thank you. We discussed this at the Public Works meeting last month. We talked it over with land use and legislation. I've got Brian Galden, our water plant engineer. This is the next step along our rehab process with how we would like to complete the process of putting the plans together and hopefully moving ahead with the rehab project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian, who's got a lot more experience with the C Mar or the construction manager at risk process.
Thank you, Ted. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So this is just meant to be informative, so if you have questions as we go along, feel free to interrupt and and get those out. And so just a little history on the C Mar process, construction manager at risk. It's a different project delivery method than the traditional design bid build model. And it incorporates a little bit more interaction with a contractor rather than the bid process. And it was approved for state projects in two thousand and five, so since that time, state projects have been using it. And municipalities have as well. It didn't specifically talk about C Mar in the statute for municipalities, but there were municipalities using it under a different category, which is called best value selection. And so it had been used in some municipalities under that. There was never any lawsuits or anything against it, so there was really no decision made of whether or not it really should or should not be being used under that. But because it started to be used, there was a push to actually get it recognized as as a viable way to do construction projects for municipalities. And so in two thousand and twenty-three, back in August of last year, the statute was changed to actually specifically call out construction manager at risk as a viable option for municipalities under the public bidding laws. And then that statute also had a sub statute that laid out kind of the direct path of exactly how to use it. So there's a pretty good game plan laid out in the statute for the things you need to do from a legality standpoint doing construction manager at risk. I am myself have been involved in three so far C Mar projects in the state. I have one that is just starting construction, is going to break ground in a couple of weeks. I have another one that we're kind of working through the design process. So I have had the experience to use that statute and see how that kind of plays out. The next thing I want to do is kind of talk about, well, what exactly is C Mar? How does it work? And what are the advantages of it? And why should City International Falls consider it? And so the way the process works is instead of us as your engineer designing a full project and then putting it out for public bid, we start the design process, which we already have for the water plant. We've taken it far enough to be to submitted to the Department of Health to get their approval for the project, but there are many details yet to work through to make it what would be bid ready. And so you can really take your project, whatever position it's at, and then you're going to go out for requests for proposals for potential C Mar companies. And these would be normal general contractors that would bid on, say, a water plant project anyway. But they would be proposing to you as a C Mar. And so this would be a more normal proposal process like you would be used to for other RFPs where they put in qualifications, references, experience, all those type of things. And you could have a team put together that would review those proposals and then actually interview the C Mars. And normally that team, that committee is is a mixture of staff and council members, anywhere from three to five people typically that would be on the selection committee. And what the C Mar itself, there's two different phases to it. The first phase is pre-construction services and then the second phase is construction services. And the pre-construction phase, what kind of happens is is we hand the C Mar, whatever the design is, to date. And we give them that that package. And the first thing they're going to do is look at what's there and give a cost estimate for what they feel that project's worth. And they're going to contact subcontractors, they're going to contact suppliers and and try to get as accurate a cost as they can based on how far the design is along. That number comes back to our team. We sit down with the contractor. And we also look at the budget. We look at the scope, the goals of the project for the city and say, okay, this this project is X amount of dollars. How does that fit with the budget? Does it achieve the goals of the project? And then what can we do to improve it? Is there cost saving measures we can do? And this is where now as a city, you start to gain in on the experience of the contractor because they get to bring some things to the table during the design process that may be better options, maybe cheaper options, maybe options the team didn't think of. And now you're gaining in on their experience. That process is kind of iterative. We work as a team to change scope, create more more detail on things until we end up at a place where we decide this is the project. Staff has got everything in there that they want and we're happy with where the budget is. So this is all the pre-construction services. At the end of the pre-construction services, this C Mar now gives what's called a guaranteed maximum price to the owner. And the owner can either accept that guaranteed maximum price and say, yes, you're hired to give us, deliver thus this project for no more than that dollar amount. And then at that point, you're contracting with them to do that. Or you could reject it and say, well, thank you for your services. We're going to take what we now have as a plan set and we're just going to go publicly bid it like a normal bid project. So even as you hire them in that first phase, you're only committing to the pre-construction services, which on my history on these type of projects has been a cost in the ten to twenty thousand dollar range. And I suspect that is way below the effort level that they're actually putting into it. So we do not see high costs on this first phase. But you still have the opportunity, if you cannot come to a agreed upon price, that you can kind of off ramp and just go bid the project. If you if you agree to the price, you you have a contract with them now. And then they will go publicly bid, bid packages within that package. And this is where the public bidding part comes in to meet the public bidding laws, is they will break that project down into subcategories, electrical, mechanical, process piping. There may be ten different categories. And then there are subcontractors that are pre-qualified through a qualification process that are allowed to bid on those sub packages. Along with the C Mar themselves, they can also bid on sub packages. And so they actually go out and bid the work, but even though you've already agreed to that maximum price with them, they still go out and facilitate public bidding of all the particular bid items. Now, if those, say those bids all came back two million dollars over budget, that's on the contractor because they've already agreed to their guaranteed maximum price. But along the way, they are doing lots of due diligence, talking to suppliers, subcontractors. And so we'd expect that the numbers they have to bring to the guaranteed maximum price, you're likely not going to be exceeded when they bid it. So that's just a very general overview of how the process works. And I'll pause there to just see if there's questions about how it works before I get into why why should the City of International Falls consider this? So.
Any questions, Sean? Sean?
All right, so so why is this a good method potentially for the City of International Falls? Well, one thing I've seen over the last several years, particularly in northern Minnesota, is is a lack of contractors that bid these types of projects. My projects, other engineers, I mean, we keep track of kind of bids that are going on. And we've seen some that get one bidder. If you're two, you're happy at this point to get two bidders to bid these projects. I've seen several that get one and then they're forty, fifty percent over budget or double. I guess I've seen some that have been double because there's not some competition out there. So this process can create a little bit more interest. And I know that for a fact on a few projects that I've talked to contractors that if it wasn't a C Mar, they wouldn't touch it. If it was a C Mar, they'd be interested. So I think you get a little bit more interest. We talked about earlier that you get to benefit from the experience level of the contractor because they get to be involved in this decision making process. And so instead of going through a design, kind of putting all your eggs in one And so instead of going through a design, kind of putting all your eggs in one basket on bid day and then getting a number that you may not be happy with, you have the ability while you're going through the design process to work towards a budget. And that might mean cutting out scope, it might mean modifying things, but at least when you get to the point where you have a project, you're not going to be four million dollars over budget on bid day and then sitting there going, well, now what do we do? Do we redesign it? Do we rebid? Do we cut scope? You know? So that's a big advantage. Another thing is that there's there's more ability for smaller bid packages to try to get more local contractors involved. Since this kind of plays out over more time, the contractors can actually break apart bid items that they want on a big bid. So you can imagine that, you know, say, a small excavating contractor that that maybe doesn't have tons of manpower. If they're going to come in and bid a big part of a project, it's going to be really difficult for them. And so a general contractor doing a bigger project is not going to probably look to that small of sub to come in and do a small part of work. But in this method, they
Real quick, but that smaller contractor, do they already have to be pre-approved?
They would be part of the pre-approved process. So before the public bidding of these subcontracts, there's a pre-qualification period. So the way we've handled that is that pre-qualification was advertised publicly, just like a public bid would be that says, you know, City of International Falls is doing this C Mar on a water plant, interested in subcontractors, and then we listed out all the bid packages.
Perfect.
And then they had to just put in qualifications. And once they're approved to bid, then they will get the plan set during bidding. And actually, at at that point, after they've pre-qualified, the C Mar is required to take the low bidder. So it's not that the C Mar can go pick and choose. Once you're either you're either in or you're out when you're pre-qualified. And once you're in, it's based on the low bid. Now, the one thing the C Mar does have to do is make sure the bids are apples to apples. And they may get two bids and this person's low, but it's obvious they are missing things. And so the C Mar will work through that to make sure the bids are are adequate. Yep.
Thank you.
And so there's opportunity to maybe make some smaller bid packages that can that can break up that work a little bit different. Let's see. I think, I mean, I've I've hit on a lot of the the major things here on on why it's beneficial. And honestly, for me, I mean, I have multiple clients in northern Minnesota, and it's hard for me not to recommend this process to all of them right now because I've seen the bidding market and I've seen the high bids come in on bid day with one bidder. And and then you're you're kind of left scrambling a little bit. And so this is a way to take away a little bit of that anxiety and know that by the time you approve a project, you're going to be you're going to feel good about the budget. So I probably have more to say, but I've said a lot already. So happy to talk and discuss questions.
I can see some benefit to this, especially with the water treatment plant that we're working with. That's not, I mean, it's it's not all over the place where you have people that have worked on them that are going to work on them. And so by going this route, I can see where it would probably benefit us quite a bit by especially a specialty construction as that.
And the one thing is, as I've learned and gone through this process, you know, doing road projects, this isn't something you would, you know, it's there's not enough change or being able to tweak, be able to save dollars, right? Put pipe in the ground is put pipe in the ground. Like water plants aren't special.
Yep.
And and there are only so many contractors out there that are, you know, we want to go with all the contractors. That's
And and like
One bid.
And and rehab projects too are particularly helpful here because we can bring the contractor into the building and we can walk around. And we can get ideas and they can look at it and go, you know, and and we try to do our best as designers to to talk to contractors and figure out, you know, what works better. But even in the one the one I'm starting construction on, I mean, they brought ideas to the table that I would have never considered because I couldn't imagine they would have been cheaper than what I was designing. It just things out of left field where I'm like, really, that's cheaper? But that's that's part of what you get. And, you know, so there there's a lot of benefit. And rehab projects are particularly helpful with the C Mar.
I just think one, along with the possible cost savings, you get the actual guaranteed price of that. But you read the paper and everybody's in the same position we are too, either building new water plants or treatment plants or rehabbing. So there's going to be all those other jobs there. So that'll make it even that much more tougher when we, you know, it's all happening at the same time. So hopefully that's good. Guaranteed some bids like Walt said.
So in the event that we we move forward with this, I I don't think that we're making any decisions on this tonight. But what is the game plan moving forward for this this practice?
So I I think if you were to decide to move forward, I can kind of maybe lay out a schedule. So you once, once you guys, if you make the decision to go towards a C Mar, it's probably going to take approximately three to four months to actually get one hired. So there's an RFP that would have to be developed, then that gets publicly advertised for three weeks. You get the RFPs, you do interviews, you score them. And so you're going to you're going to take three to four months to probably get somebody on board. Once you get somebody on board, you you don't want to necessarily rush everything because part of the benefit is getting them on board and kind of working through this process. And so once they're on board, you might take six months to kind of go through these cost evaluations to where you'd get to like a GMP before they're ready to publicly bid. And so I suppose maybe maybe seven, eight months, I guess, between saying, yes, we want to do it to where you might expect a GMP. And, you know, at this point, and I know Ted's waiting to jump in here, so so
I'm waiting to throw the mic over to Ted.
So from our perspective, we could, we're ready to move in that direction if the councils want to, you know. And so, yeah.
Yeah, slide that mic right over to Ted. So where are we with with potential funding from outside groups? I mean, where where are we in the process of being able to move this forward?
So your project is currently on the funding list through the Drinking Water Revolving Fund through the Public Facilities Authority. So it is, it's approved, it's ready. You're approved for a loan for the project. Initially, we thought there might be some grant affordability grants based on median household income and things like that, where the project is estimated right now that does not trigger any of those affordability grants. As you do more water projects, hopefully you'd start to trigger those. And so at this point, from a funding perspective, there is a low-interest loan through PFA sitting there for International Falls on this project if you want to move it forward.
And do we think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, are we at twelve million for the PFA project? Is that?
I think it was like eleven, six. I think in that ten to twelve range. I don't have the exact number, but
And so then if we we end up moving this forward and we end up being over the the eleven, six, I mean, then that's when we start negotiating the the project. I just want to have a good understanding before we start moving around eleven million dollars.
So in terms of the funding from the state, they will fund the project at whatever cost it is. So if you go through the process and it's fourteen, the loan, the grant, the loan through PFA will still fund it all. So you do not have a funding issue with the loan.
Okay.
The funding consideration would would come down to a rate evaluation and and the effect on rates is where you'd have to make a determination on, well, how big a loan?
Can we support?
Yeah. And I know there's a lot of efforts going on.
And I think that is, you know, with if, say, our plans right now are at fifty percent, we need to get them to a hundred percent to see where we're at for the dollar amount. Okay, so we have to do that to be able to figure out the affordability. That's why I'm bringing, you know, that's why we're here today is to, this is the next step. So if if we go through and our guaranteed max price is fourteen million dollars, right, we're going to look at whatever we can do. But ultimately, even if we bring the C Mar on, when we get that guaranteed max price, we've got the option of bidding it, going with the guaranteed max price, or just not doing anything. But we need to go through that process to get there. And that's, that is the, you know, it's it's working with Northland Securities, right? We're working in conjunction with them at the same time to kind of figure out, and we kind of use that twelve million dollar marker as how is that going to affect our rates? How is, so they are kind of going. But we need to get the project, which we've we've already got the money sitting in the bank, to finish the design. We need to either finish the design or go with the C Mar and finish the design. And originally, when I when I talked to this body, I had said that, you know, we were going to head in the direction where we were going to get it to a hundred percent, just as a normal design bid. And this C Mar with, especially with the law changing in two thousand and twenty-three, I think it's very well worth the effort. And I would recommend that we proceed with it.
Okay, so then this is my my last statement. I I know all of us here understand this. But I just want again to, for public information, why are we updating the the water plant?
So the water plant was built in nineteen ninety-one. The filters, they've got a thirty-year life expectancy. We're beyond that. It's it's time to do an upgrade. It's not a rebuild. We're not building new. We're rehabbing what we have. I think the numbers we were talking about this afternoon, a new plant would be thirty mil, twenty-five or thirty million dollars, right? So we're not, you know, we're not moving to that point. We we feel we can rehab what we have, but we need to do something because it is, you know, it's like rehabbing the elevated tanks. We're, we got one that was put in in ninety-four, I believe, supposed to be rehabbed every twenty years. We're doing it this year. We're we're kicking the can down the road. And this this water plant is the next step.
So the the one thing, and and maybe you could just quickly address this. When we, when I first got on council, we did a walkthrough of the plant, and there was lots of equipment that was in there that was getting dated to the point where we were not able to upgrade that, not upgrade, replace that equipment because it was getting too old. Is that what we're talking about here? We're talking about upgrading it so that it is modern and being able to, I saw that, modern and to be able to replace things as they go bad?
Yes. So as as Ted said, it was built in ninety-one, so we're at thirty, they're closing in on thirty-three or thirty-four years here. And and by the time construction, by the time you end construction, you can add another three years of that timeline. But so, you know, think of like a house, right? You have your major mechanical equipment, your furnace, your AC. You get to twenty years, you're starting to go, okay, when when's it going to go? When's it going to go? A treatment facility like that is no different. It's just magnified by all the equipment, all the big, I mean, there there's nine or ten pumps in there that each one of those pumps is a fifty thousand dollar item, right? They're original, right? So they're operating on borrowed time. There's all kinds of equipment. There's electrical components, all of those things at thirty-five years old are at the end of their life. And so that's just, that's the big part of this project is it's like a house. Everything starts to fail at the same time, right? Your water heater fails, and then the next thing you know, you're like, oh, I better watch out because my AC is not going to work, or my furnace isn't going to work. But that's where it's at because none of those things to this point have been really replaced. And so now it's kind of doing a big replacement all at once, basically setting the facility up for another twenty, thirty years of life. Reliable treatment, so.
And again, that was that was more just for public because, you know, it is a big expense. However, we understand that we're we're putting money into quality water, being people, being able for people to utilize their drinking water and not have community issues that other communities have with with poor drinking water or potable water. So I just, I understand that, and I think the council understands that. But I think the community has to hear that. That's why we're making the decisions we're making.
Go ahead.
Beyond popular belief on Facebook, I am, I try and be proactive, okay? I do not want to be reactive. My, you know, I I talk to Brian all the time. If we lose the bottom, we've got five filters out there. If we lose the bottom of one of those filters, what's going to happen? Well, number one, we're going to lose twenty percent of our capacity just like that. Now, can we shut it off and walk away? Yes. Okay? But we know the filter needs to have something done to it at twenty-five, thirty years. So let's not wait for the bottom to rot out of it to be able to have to be reactive to, I want to be able to plan for it. And one of the first things I did when I became Public Works Director was in two thousand and twenty is I told the elected officials, the one thing I was not up to speed on was the water plant. And that was the first thing I went after hard was to do an assessment on the water plant. We've got pieces out there that we cannot replace. We have, we have air-actuated valves. That, me being a maintenance man at heart, I hear air leaks everywhere. Okay, now, that's an energy. It's it's tough on equipment, and we're throwing money out the door with electricity, okay? But nobody really keeps track of it because it ticks up just a little bit at a time. But when you look at rebuilding one of the banks on these obsolete valves, it's like, how much was it, Sean? Thirty-two hundred to rebuild the bank just to get the air to quit leaking. Or it's twenty-five thousand dollars to replace the whole valve. Okay, well, we've got five of those valves. So do I replace all five of those valves? Do I put thirty-two hundred dollars to get the air leak? Or do we make it part of the rehab and do it all at the same time and actually be able to put some engineering behind it to make sure that we're getting the best equipment that is the most up to date, that's going to serve the citizens of International Falls for another thirty years? So I'll get off my soapbox, but it's it's, I I want to be proactive on this one and and plan for it. And and I feel we've done our due diligence since two thousand and twenty, coming up with this plan. And this C Mar is just another piece of it that kind of came along. So I'm sorry.
Okay, so question I have, I understand that place pretty good, okay? And the filtering system is very important. And you mentioned the actuators here. How about the motor control centers? That's getting done too? Okay?
Yes.
Reason I ask that because I worked on that stuff there. So it's Allen Bradley, it was good in its day. But yeah, it's got a lot of years on it, so.
And Ted touched on this a little bit, but the the longer life on anything, your maintenance costs get exponentially higher and higher to keep things running. I think we heard it previously with the TV station, right, is is, you know, you just, you spend more and more. And at some point, there's a tipping point there of where where you need to replace. And that's a majority of the equipment at the facility, that's kind of where it's at.
And we're doing the pumps too.
Yes, yes, all new pumps. Yep.
And that's if you're done, right? If you were done, then I mean, that and they might not fail, right, for another whatever, or all five of them might fail at once and not, right? We're still walking away, but we're not having the water, right?
Well, if one fails, that puts more pressure on the other ones too.
I mean, that and, yeah, you street all over.
Another thing we dealt with, which I hope it doesn't happen, is we found a serious design flaw when we had high water in two thousand and twenty-two. We've got a line that goes out and ties into our intake, but there's no valve on it. So what we did was, there was a tank in the plant that assumes the same level as the river. So as the river went up, there was no way to stop the water because there was no valve on it to be able to shut it off. So that was one of the things that we added as part of this is, if that happens again, you know, I don't think people realize if 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 we would have contaminated the tanks in the floor of the water plant, it's not just we can clean it up. It's we're done making water. Because once the river gets so high, we can't empty the tanks in the ground at the water plant. And and those are the things that, you know, another thing I was going to touch on is the rules set by the Department of Health have changed in the last thirty-some years. Okay, so there are some things that we have to do. Right now, we're grandfathered in. Right now, we're grandfathered in, but there are some things that now, if we're going to do this major rehab, we have to bring it up to the current code. So, you know, there's some things that are working fine, but the, the rules have changed and the statutes have changed, and so we have to upgrade that side of it as well.
Please.
What is the time limit that you feel that we need to make this decision now?
Um, well, I, I think, as I said, the project is ready to move forward. And so really, I mean, really, the only next decision, decision would be this C-MAR process or not. If this is a direction you want to go, because that would initiate a different path moving forward. And so, you know, I mentioned that, that process, you probably want to give it seven, eight months to run its course between saying, yes, we want to do C-MAR to where we're going to be bidding and getting into construction. And so, um, you know, whether it's tonight or in two weeks or whenever, you know, I wouldn't say it's a pressing matter, um, to make the decision. But, uh, once it is made, that will kind of start us moving in a, in a certain direction. So, um, I think, like I said, if, if a decision was made now to go that direction, I think we would probably be looking at trying to get, like, taking bids in probably in early '25. You know, we have seven months till the end of the year to kind of work through the C-MAR process. And then by around the first of the year is when you guys would probably be considering that guaranteed maximum price. And, uh, and from there, then bids would be, be taken. And it's gonna, there's going to be lead times on equipment and a lot of those things because, again, this is mostly a major equipment replacement is a lot of it, so. And Ted mentioned with, with kind of the cost evaluation, and one of the other ones I'm working on, we, we just got our first cost model back from the contractor. So this is their first kind of, um, you know, the first gut check on what this project costs. And so my next move then is going to the client going, hey, this is what this costs right now. Is that still your budget? You know, right? And that gives them an opportunity to look at the funding piece and go, oh, we need to think about this more, or, oh, we're sitting really good. And so that's kind of the key thing is, once we start that process, we can get that number back and have a little bit of something to work with then on the financing side to see, see where the comfort level is, um, so.
Walt, it sounded like you wanted to make a motion over there.
Well, beans, you know, we've got the, we've got this outdated equipment, and we're talking about what if, what if, what if it goes down? If, I mean, what if we wait another few months and we're short on the other end and something does go down? I think we need to decide tonight what we're going to do and move this thing forward.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion, yes.
Move forward with MC, uh, C-MAR? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Taylor to move forward with the C-MAR. And this is only in, in regards to the water plant, correct? I mean, this, this isn't a new way of doing business. This is just in regards to this one facility that we have. All right, so we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. You have a plan?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the Committee of the Whole, uh, recommendations. Consider forming a negotiating, negotiating committee to represent the city for the upcoming union negotiations. I am prepared to make three different negotiation teams. The first one would be for the 49ers for Public Works. It would be the city administrator, our HR representative, uh, the department head, which would be Ted Brokaw, and Walt Buller as the chair of Public Works. And I would like to have Pete on as an alternate as the, um, the mayor pro tem. So chair would entertain a motion to approve that negotiating committee.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Wagner. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilor Taylor. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, for the police, I would like to have the city administrator, our HR representative, Chief Koscheck, and, um, Mike Holden as a member of our public safety, um, team. And again, Pete as mayor pro tem as an alternate if Mike can't make it. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Next, for the fire and EMS, I would like to have the city administrator, uh, HR representative, Chief Manasa, Tim Wagner as the other member of our, uh, public safety committee, and, uh, Councilor Taylor as the mayor pro tem as a, uh, as an alternate. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Taylor.
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have, uh, the review and approve the employee handbook. Chair would entertain a mo, please.
Can you back up to 6B and approve these committees now to can, uh, move forward with negotiations?
Oh, yeah.
Please.
Chair, I'm sorry. How did I admit? Well, I, I, I know how I did it.
You're just excited.
I know, I get so excited all the time. All right, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve those three committees negotiating on behalf of the city council with the unions.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Taylor. We have a second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we'll go to, uh, the review and approve the employee handbook. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Decide, discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, consider and approve advertisement for a part-time seasonal office assistant. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Hearing no second, the motion would fail due to a lack of a second. I, I would like to have that go back to, um, the Committee of the Whole just to have an additional discussion. Maybe there's something that, uh, has been missed that needs to be brought to the council. Um, go to the first reading of ordinance, uh, mending the Mid-Continent Communications Franchise Agreement. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Wagner. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion?
I, the only problem I have with it is now that is, uh, the lack of being able to watch Minnesota Twins on the TV for a lot of people in town here, and that's part of the reason we have cable TV for not just my purpose of Minnesota Twins, but other programming because we live so far away and help us be connected in the world. As you tell with my hat, you know, I'm still getting over no CBC, and I can't watch Hockey Night in Canada for, you know, so that's just my.
Is that between Midco or is that because of Bally?
It's, it's between Bally and Midco both. And the last I read is, um, Comcast, who's part of Midco, and in the cities is they want to raise the Twins to the higher package they got to pay for, and Bally wants to keep it where it is on part of their, um, negotiations or whatever they got going with their bankruptcy. Hey, we all have our thing, Harley. We all, we all have our.
I echo his sentiments that they're going to try to charge us more, and, and we don't have CBC anymore. That's another one I'd like to see back. And maybe we need to open this up to see if somebody else will come in here.
And this is not an exclusive contract. We had that conversation at the Committee of the Whole, so.
We know that, but.
We, we definitely can.
Offer a franchise agreement to somebody else too.
Yep. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
No.
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 Yes.
All vote yes, motion carries 3-2, or most, motion fails. I'm sorry, motion failed. I'm so used to the other way. I'm sorry. Motion fails 3-2.
Well, here's what I want to say about it, and I know it's after the vote, but Pete's right. Can't even get the Minnesota Twins. I mean, paying big bucks, I pay big monthly fee and we can't get that, you know?
No, I, I, I get and understand it. So I ju, I, let me understand this. If we get the Twins back on the air, do we pass this then? I.
Well, that'll help.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I just want to make sure where we're at.
Yeah, this isn't the last outpost up here, you know? It's the icebox of the nation, but it's not the last outpost. We should be able to get something like.
I, I understand, I, I.
A decent price, right?
I, I'm not against that. I, I, I too have Midco, but I only use it for internet.
Oh.
I, moving on.
Do you have dish network?
No, I don't have TV.
FUBU?
I don't have TV.
No TV?
No TV. No, I, I just, just have.
Well, lucky for you, because I was going to give you the Twins schedule so you know when I was coming over till this, right now.
Now you can't even come over there.
No, no.
All right, move, move.
Something come right to my head too, but I'm.
Get on itself, get on to something else.
We're moving on.
Okay.
All right, wow. Consider request to purchase two APX 4,000 Motorola radios from DSC Communications in the amount of $6,842.32 from the capital outlay, uh, for the police department. Chief, do you want to come forward or? Think this is pretty routine, but.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, I went over this at the public safety meeting recently, and we're kind of aware of the need for two more just due to two of them breaking down. Pretty standard purchase. We actually got it for a little bit cheaper than I'd initially quoted in the public safety meeting by a few thousand, so, yeah. Soon as we get approval, we're going to order those, so we have a full battery of radios.
All right, chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0, thank you. We'll go to, uh, approve removal of EMT from the International Falls Ambulance Service due to inactivity. Uh, we have the, um, the, the name on, on the back of our, or on the letter. Chair would entertain a motion for that removal.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Taylor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to, uh, a letter, uh, I'm sorry, uh, approve Public Works summer employees. Chair would entertain a motion for that approval.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion?
Just one, Sherry, do we, oh, did we hire less summer employees with the combining of the? I was going to ask that, but he snuck out. Then last year because we have the two park and rec employees?
That is correct, so.
Okay.
So previously, uh, city council had approved Public Works to hire 10 for the summer, and we had 10 hired. Two ended up declining for whatever reason after they had been extended the contingent offers of employment. So, uh, Public Works will be going with nine. So this would replace one of the two.
Okay, I was just wondering if there's a difference compared to the other year.
Yeah, I want to say that, I think they had 14 last year.
I just thought the list might have been shorter. That's all, only question, thanks.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Chair would entertain, uh, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have a, uh, letter of resignation, uh, from Ward Merrill on the Forest Hill Cemetery Board. Chair would entertain a motion to, uh, accept that resignation.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Uh, next, consider options to fill the vacant, uh, position at the Forest Hill Cemetery Board. I've had some discussion with, uh, Councilor Buller, who, uh, has had conversations with some folks at the cemetery board. Um, it looks like they are looking to come up with some recommendations, is that correct? Walt?
Yeah, I talked to, um, one of the members on their other meeting on Friday. I talked to her Saturday, and she had made comment that, uh, they'd like to have a month to do some recruiting for, uh, for a new member for that board. And, uh, I also talked to, uh, city administrator, Brookstrom, and, uh, she suggested that they would advertise too that there is an opening on that board, that we do have applications here at the city hall that they can come get an application from us, and then we would just forward that on to them for that, so that they can make their selection for what they thought, who, a person that they thought was fit for them.
Okay, and, and that makes sense to me. I, um, one of the things that I had spoke with the city administrator too, it, uh, it says in their bylaws that I, that the mayor can make up to two appointments, that I don't have to make any appointments, but, um, you know, if they can find someone that, that is interested in serving, or if there is someone in the community that is interested in serving, I, I, I don't want to take that away from them, so I would definitely.
Doesn't have to be your appointment from there either, if you just have them on board.
Yep.
I think by having them know that we've got applications here too that we can forward to them and, and let them select what, what they feel is going to fit, who's going to fit in their board, so.
So we'll just hold off on this, and if we get any recommendations, uh, um, at our June meeting, uh, we'll make an appointment if, uh, that makes sense. Any other business to come before the council? All right, uh, reports of the administrator, attorney, and department heads. City administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing additional this evening.
All right, city attorney, I don't see her on this evening. Um, department heads? In your packet, you have the police monthly report, the fire rescue EMS monthly report. Go to the report of the mayors, uh, or the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
I would just like to update the council and that it looks like we have enough money to make our bid for Hockey Day in Minnesota. So we'll be having a meeting here this month and see where we go from there, getting stuff together.
Cool.
Yeah, hopefully we will.
Mike, you have anything?
No.
Tim?
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, was wondering if all of you are aware of the, what, what the county had done with, um, the ambulance? On their, uh, can you, can you say them words again, what, what they call it? Forrest Betty?
They approved exploring a subordinate tax for the unorganized county areas of the International Falls Ambulance Services, their, our service area for the International Falls Ambulance Service. So that would include anybody outside of St. Louis County that ambulance service covers, city of International Falls, or the city of Rainier. Just their unorganized area.
When would we hear back from them on what, what they decide with that?
They just agreed to explore it. They did not give a timeframe. I can definitely reach out and see if they've met or what, you know, when they'll be discussing and maybe attend as a, a guest of their, you know, an audience of them. Sure there's going to be a. Sure's gonna be a public information, but I did not hear a timeframe.
And, and where I get frustrated is, um, next month is the deadline. You know, next month is, so, we've had this conversation since, um, before I was mayor. Bob had explored this as well, and in the time that I've been mayor, we've had multiple conversations, we've had a task force, we've ha- we've met for meeting after meeting. There's been a community conversation in, in St. Louis County. We've had all of the county commissioners, uh, not all of them. We've had county commissioners from both St. Louis County, inter- or Koochin County, members of Rainier, and members of the city of International Falls meeting. We've, um, the county held up because they were waiting to get a full board. We've had a full board. I went and spoke at a committee of the whole meeting asking if they were willing to take this up. We've had a community conversation from, uh, town hall here in our community, um, and the overwhelming conversation, not just from residents of International Falls, but from residents of our tac- or our, um, our, uh, service area is people are willing to pay more for the ambulance service. We're at a, we're at a critical point. I mean, we're working with, uh, the state legislature to try to help us with our funding issues. We are not the only ones. Um, we've been active at the state legislature. We have worked with Senator Smith's office to try to, uh, work on some of these issues, and we're still in the exact same point as where we were six years ago. The, the problem, in my opinion, is nobody is mandated to pay for the service except for the residents of International Falls. So however much money we lose, that's just on us, but we have to serve, uh, Koochin County, we have to serve Rainier, and we have to serve a portion of, uh, St. Louis County. But when there's any losses, we're the only ones that have to pay for it. And I think that that's wrong. I think it's wrong in the state legislature, and, uh, I, I, it, I, I'm just so frustrated with it.
Well, and that's like I've said also recently is that we're gonna be having, this is gonna be our problem, take care of it ourselves. We're not get- getting any help is, this is a start. Hopefully something comes of it, but to solve this problem. And that's why I've asked the chief, and the first time was October 11th, by the way, to, uh, we need some different scheduling models, not because we don't wanna have full-time paramedics all the time, but it might come to a time where we won't be able to, or we're gonna have to change, split it up somehow so we can afford to have some and not none, and that's just part of the things we gotta do.
Please?
I just would say we've got one, one more scheduled date we're waiting on, and that's the end of the legislative, legislative season, to see if they're gonna give us some money. After that, we have a decision to make.
Absolutely.
And it goes towards these models.
That's a one-time thing, right?
It is, but it's really the only thing.
But I think if there's a model of, or something that we do now, it might affect what that one-time sum might be if we already have something in place.
I, I, I would disagree with that statement.
Not at all.
But, but it doesn't change the fact that.
Doesn't cha- yeah.
It doesn't change the fact that we, we need to come up with a game plan. And where, where I've always struggled in this is that it, it seems like the, the community conversation ends up being if we are, um, that we're trying to get rid of the ambulance or we're trying to push that on somebody else, and that, that is not the case. We have some of the best staff, uh, over in that fire hall that are doing their job, and they're going out to these accidents, they're, they're going to houses where people are, are having an emergency. We have some of the best staff in the world, and we have, we have great services. We can't afford to continue the service if other folks that are utilizing the service aren't willing to help. That's where my problem is. We have some of the best staff there is.
I think when Betty and I were the only two that were on that steering committee that are here now, but we were at the point where we had things down to anything over worth $10,000. A piece of property has a building worth over $10,000 would be assessed a $60 fee or in that area anyway, and that would take care of our deficit, and it seems like, and keep our, our ALS instead of BLS, just as it is. And we were at that point when the, the Chair just suspended the committee because, I don't know, I don't know why, but.
He didn't, didn't have a reason why, what?
No, it was at the point where they were losing, I didn't have a full commissioner board over there and that, that kinda thing.
They used that, they didn't have a.
But we had gone to that degree.
Full board?
Is that my right, Betty? We had that, we had it all worked out. I mean, they, they went and found out the parcels, all the parcels involved and everything that it would be, and, uh, yeah, it was, it was that close at that time, but, but it's still, I mean, we could pick it up from there. It's already been researched, and, and I think it would be a quick, uh, if, I mean, they already said that, the county board said they had two people to be on the committee. You appointed two people to be on the committee, but nobody's called a meeting, and I think that's part of it, too, so I, we were, we were very close at that time, and I was kinda disappointed that we've got, got shut down just because it could be a place and be presented to the legislation coming up right now.
Well, and, and I'll, I'll get to you in just one second. The, the last piece of that is when they were short of county commissioners, you know, in some capacity, I think we all understood that. We, we, we got that. That's why when they had a full board, I went to their committee of the whole meeting, and I said, hey, here we are, we're, we're asking for the help, and we still have, uh, you know, we, we do that monthly meeting with the county. Um, it was one of the first things that we addressed is this is, is a major issue and concern of ours, and we're just, we're, we're just not getting, because there's no mechanism in place at the state legislature to allow us to move this forward. Tim?
I, I would have to totally disagree with Walt. I think that steering committee's a waste of time. It's not gonna do us any good. We need to make some decisions. They're not, they're proposing things that don't even work, so, um, all steering committee will do is push us further down the road, we'll go further in debt, and then we'll have to make even worse decisions down the road. That's just my opinion.
Now, Tim, I was saying that we were at the point where we were ready to present it. It was that far along, and.
Yeah.
It got kiboshed.
Exactly.
So.
Well, what's, Tim, what's this deal that you were talking about that they are studying something, and Betty talked about it? How much would that help the ambulance to, if they decide to do that? Does it help it?
No.
The county I'm talking about, doesn't help it.
Well, it would, but we don't even know if it's.
They're just exploring it. I don't know the legality of it. I don't, I have not researched what.
Have they had that, was that in the newspaper?
It was at the board meeting.
It's in their minutes.
It's in their minutes.
Okay.
No, it's in the paper.
So all that is, is just exploring.
That's right.
That's how they worded in their motion, yes.
Stick here. All right? All right, well, let's, um, we also had an airport steering committee meeting. Councilor Kayler, myself, and Commissioner Roach, and Commissioner McIntyre, and Lisa was there to take notes. Um, if Councilor Kayler would like to put his thoughts forth, how you thought the steering committee, airport steering committee went?
Well, I think it's a slow process, how about that? I mean, um, I think we finally got it down to what's important is we, not us going over airport contracts and stuff, and we got it, our next thing, actually really look at the, um, the agreement and the annexation, and there's some pushback. Let's put it that way on both, and so we're, I think we gotta just, we're gonna have to decide, and I put it on the, have Betty put it on the committee of the whole next week so we can talk about what our thoughts are as a council, where we wanna go from here.
And that was discussed today at the land use and legislation. Having that go to committee of the whole as well, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I think we'd have to decide where we're at and what we wanna do and where we wanna go.
Perfect. Councilor Buller?
Don't think there's anything, then, well, the airport, the other airport commission meeting, and, and it was discussed at our last meeting before this, which way that the steering committee wanted us to go, and so we.
Yeah.
We, uh, they said they'd like to see the contracts looked at. Well, we found the dates that were up on the contracts, and the only contract up this year is the, uh, the janitorial contract is up the end of this year, and the other, uh, one other contract's up in '27, and we just thought, we'd like to start looking at contracts in October or earlier rather than the contract comes up to you in December, oh, it's due, the end of December, and everybody just signs it and it's all done. So these contracts, when they come due now, and in '27, they might be a whole new, a new airport commission, who knows? But, but to look at them early and get time to digest them and figure out and talk to people and find out what they would like changed or how we can change the janitorial. We got the new, uh, the new X-ray machine in that, in the building there now. Do they need something different done? And I just think we need to have, uh, all the stakeholders input in it before we probably do another contract on, on all that stuff like that, so.
So one of the, the big conversations that we ended up having with, uh, with the county regarding the airport this last year was about getting the budgets out earlier so that they can get to the council and to the county board. Is that something that's being discussed right now?
And we, we did discuss that, and they said, like, in July or end of July, they, at least that's what Kyra mentioned, what, 'cause her and Thor attended the last committee meet, or steering committee.
So we, we are getting some progress. I, I, I mean, we're, we're making moves.
We discussed several ways to increase revenue. Um, we're still working on those. Uh, we still have to work on those. Well, from our, uh, airport, uh, conference that we went to, you know, the FEA, FAA does not necessarily want airports to be solely relying on government entities to support them. That's right in the FAA's rules, so.
And how is our airport funded?
Local government.
Huh, weird.
So, I mean, the idea is to try to get that entity to raise its own revenue to lessen the burden on local taxpayers. All local taxpayers, not just.
About the airport commission meeting and kind of extent on, on, uh, the, uh, parking at the airport, should we charge or shouldn't we charge? And once we do, if you do charge, that removes all FAA funding from that parking lot. So that $400,000 that we had to pay to have that redone this year or last year, it, uh, it would have to be refunded if we put a fee on parking out there.
Well, they don't know that for sure.
Well, that was one question that he had.
They don't know that for sure, though. That was just a statement.
If we did, though, but from here on, there would be no FAA funding, no matter what.
Exactly, there would be no funding, correct, but that, that, that other part is all conjecture.
But yet they want, FAA wants you to try to come up with new revenue sources but not on stuff you've already paid for? Or not?
They want you to come up with new revenue sources so they're not handing you money all the time.
Yeah, but if you handed money, then you can't make, I get you.
But only if you make money on it.
Oh.
It's gotta be a revenue generating thing that you build or use their money for.
Okay, gotcha.
That's what it's gotta be.
Gotcha. All right. I love this part of the meeting now. All right, so, uh, I, I, I don't have anything to, to report. Um, you guys did it all.
Yeah.
All right, we'll, uh, go to open forum. Is there anybody in the audience?
Any one of you two?
Come on.
Last chance.
All right, you have.
I'm not answering no calls tonight.